Eric.
We all set, Tom?
Yeah, right. So I'd like to call to order this May 19th meeting of the Bylaws and Ordinance Committee of the Town Council. I'm Tom Butterworth, co-chair, along with Hillary Armand, who will make her introductory remarks shortly. Other committees members present are Rita Batino. Is that about it? And Mark Jimski?
Mark Jimski, Mark Tashoda.
Yeah. Other Town Council members present, Steve Carl. And there we go. And Robin Bates-Mason. The sole topic on the agenda tonight is gas-powered leaf blowers. The Canyons Conservation Commission has developed recommendations that it could include, among other things, a change in the town's noise pollution ordinance, which is where we come in. I'd like to welcome Linda Andros. Hello, Linda. Who will present the Conservation Commission's report. Are there any other Conservation Commission members on the call?
It hasn't appeared, but yeah, I don't think so.
All right. Welcome also to Tiger Mann, who will share the perspective of the Department of Public Works. We also welcome members of the public. We very much want to hear your opinions and we hope you'll share them on the public comment period later in the meeting. For everyone on the call, please stay on mute until you're asked to speak. All Town Council members, not just committee members, are welcome to ask questions of the presenters, but please use the raise hand feature. Hillary Armand will provide some background and context to help us understand why we're here today. I'll just say that concerns about leaf blowers have been heightened. Because I think so many people worked at home during the pandemic. The problems aren't new, but many more people have been affected. One friend who began working from home in 2020 found the noise to be incessant. He said, "On Monday, it was from my neighbor to the north. On Tuesday, from my neighbor to the south. On Wednesday, it was across the street. And on Thursday, it was my own landscape company." "It's overwhelming. There's no escape." Hillary, it's all yours.
Thanks, Tom. And again, I want to welcome, can everybody hear me okay?
Yes.
Do the noise check. Okay. I also want to welcome you to the first of what will likely be several public hearings on potential amended ordinance or town ordinance, limiting the use of gas-powered leaf blowers in New Canaan. As Tom said, this was brought to our attention by the Conservation Commission, from whom we'll hear tonight. As you'll hear, the concerns are threefold. Obviously, noise is a big concern, but also the health of those who use gas-powered leaf blowers and environmental concerns are also paramount. As you'll also hear, New Canaan isn't the first in considering these limitations. On a state level, California has banned the use of all gas-powered lawn equipment, not just leaf blowers, by 2024. And New York and Illinois legislators are considering similar statewide bans. As far as localities outside of Connecticut, Brookline, Massachusetts, Montclair, New Jersey, and Burlington, Vermont have seasonal bans on gas-powered leaf blowers. And more locally, several Westchester towns have or are considering various bans, either temporal or complete, in the case of Larchmont. And Westport and Greenwich, more locally, are also considering some sort of limitation. And in fact, Greenwich, just recently, the Quiet Yards Initiative out of Greenwich just recently published a white paper that's quite extensive. And Tom, if we haven't posted that to the, or if the Conservation Commission or town hasn't posted that, it's really, really informative and quite lengthy. So I would encourage people to read it. Another member of our committee just joined. I just want to recognize Kim Norton. So she's also on the call. Welcome, Kim. All this to say-
Thank you.
You're welcome. Welcome. All this to say, we would hardly be alone in considering some sort of limitation on their use. However, we also understand that there isn't necessarily a simple answer to this, and there are many perspectives to consider. And we've already heard from many residents. Some want a total ban. Others think any sort of limitation will be too much of a burden on landscapers and homeowners who do their own lawn care, and we're sensitive to that. Others advocate for a seasonal limitation or a day-of-the-week ban, for instance, not allowing leaf blowers on Sundays. Again, as Tom mentioned, there could also be a change to our existing noise ordinance. And just for context, I'm going to read you the pertinent part of our noise ordinance, so everybody has that top of mind. The relevant part says that "gas-powered leaf blowers, among other machinery, shall be operated at all times with a muffler in working order to abate the exhaust, combustion, and explosive noises therefrom." In addition, dot, 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 "such equipment may not be operated in the following time periods, such that the noise therefrom exceeds 45 dBA measured at the receptor's property line." And here are the time limitations. "Monday through Friday, they may not be used before 7:00 a.m. or after 7:00 p.m. On Saturdays or state and federal holidays, before 8:00 a.m. or after 6:00 p.m. And on Sundays, they may not be used before 10:00 a.m. or after 4:00 p.m." So that's the existing structure within which we're working. So to the extent that they're being used outside of that, we already have a noise ordinance in place. So the question is, do we want to extend that or extend the months of the year that we are not allowing gas-powered leaf blowers or something along those lines? Interestingly, this is enforceable as with all of our noise ordinances by the New Canaan Police Department or any municipal officer or employee designated by the first selectman. And I think we can all guess who that would be. Mr. Man. But I doubt that people are calling the police right now about leaf blowers. I mean, I think of noise ordinances where the police get involved, and that's probably like loud parties and stuff. But anyway, that's how our noise ordinance for this particular situation reads. But I just want to, you know, for our residents that are attending this or might be watching it later, please rest assured that we will consider all of this and take into account the unique characteristics of our town and its residents as we study and explore this issue at length. And with that, I'd like to turn it over to Linda Andros, who's been so kind to join us from the Conservation Commission so that she can give her presentation to our committee. Thank you.
Thank you, Hillary. That's very, your introduction is very comprehensive. I'm so, I'll just add-
I hope I didn't steal too much from you. I just wanted to give some context.
No, no, it was very, but I'll just add a few details to what you've, to what you've just introduced. So for me, I have to say, to start this, for me personally, after doing this research to prepare for the presentation, I feel that the issue tops my list as the most important action that I can support that has the greatest, greatest potential to improve the health and well-being of my community. The presentation. Tiger, can you put up my, start my presentation? Uh-oh. Hello? There we go. So go to slide two, the first slide, actually, the next slide. So citizens of New Canaan actually brought this to the commission to try to come up with something that was amenable to our community. There was a committee of concerned residents who met a couple of times to help draft some of the recommendations and also to come up with some solutions to some resistance to to any kind of legislation that would impose restrictions on lawn care. Next, next slide. "The presentation begins with the known hazards of gas leaf blowers and by inference, all electric land care magazines, machines. Then it touches on some resistant issues regarding any form of gas leaf floor restrictions with some suggestions to address these arguments. Then finally, I will conclude with the commission's recommendations with some proactive solutions to the resistance." I think the most, that noise is really the most noticeable characteristic of gas leaf blowers because it's a very, you know, noticeable nuisance. But the other hazards are equally as as dangerous to our community as the noise nuisance. And then for more than two decades, scientific studies have been conducted to determine the hazardous impact of GLBs on our health and environment. They include toxic air pollutants that increase risks of cancer, respiratory, and heart diseases. The high-velocity air jets of gas leaf floors desiccate the soil and disperse ground-borne particulates that contribute to the loss of vegetation and beneficial insects, including pollinators. And then also the high-decibel noise level that increase risks to hearing loss. High-decibel levels also contribute to learning and concentration issues in children and negatively impact adult work productivity. Next slide. "The two-stroke engines are one of the largest sources of air pollutants. The state of California has actually did some research on this and found that a good portion, maybe 20% of their air pollution was due to lawn care machines. The air pollutants from GLBs include carbon monoxide, contributes to greenhouse gases and are linked to climate change and global warming. Nitrous oxides contribute to smog formation and acid rain. And then the carcinogenic hydrocarbons are substances such as benzene, butadiene, formaldehyde. They are also leading cancer pollutants. This little, this quote from Edmunds is quoted everywhere in the press. I'm sure every, everyone who has any interest in in gas leaf blowers and their known hazards has read that the hydrocarbon emissions from a half-hour of yard work with a two-stroke leaf blower are about the same as a 3,900-mile drive from Texas to Alaska in a Ford 150 Raptor." Next slide. In the, whoops. Wait, let me see here. I just lost, lost this here. Hmm.
Okay.
No, somehow I just lost my screen here. Make it back. Okay, here I am. "The high-velocity air blowers of gas leaf blowers generate toxic carcinogen air pollution from ground-sourced particulates. These are, of course, distributed around our neighborhood schools and public spaces. The exhaust from these air blowers are at speeds of 150 to 200 miles per hour, generating the particulates such as dust, pesticides, herbicides, fertilizers, spores, et cetera, and release them as aerosols. Therefore, we breathe them. These carcinogenic air pollution and particulates have been found to increase risks of cancer, asthma, and lung disease, heart disease, heart attack, and stroke. The American Lung Association's 22 State-of-the-Art Report gives Fairfield County an F based on a number of high ozone days. They issue a warning on their website that states, "If you live in Fairfield County, the air you breathe may put your health at risk." That's a little scary, of course, and I think they want to scare you. But they do want to emphasize, and I do want to use this to help emphasize that anything we can do to, to help with our air quality, such as reducing gas leaf blower would be helpful to our health. Next slide.
Linda, a quick question. Did you say it was all right for us to ask questions along the way?
Sure.
The impact on the ozone is, which of the above is, is it the is it the particulate?
It's mostly the exhaust for the ozone, but the, and the leaf blowers are mostly for, you know, the quality of our air that we breathe.
So the ozone is, the ozone is from the inefficient burning of the fuel?
Yes.
Okay.
The exhaust fumes.
Right. Okay.
Next slide. "In addition to our own health, these air blowers are harmful to habitats and our biodiversity. The environmental cost of blowing, removing leaves is that they, the removal of them leaves, you know, damages our insect life and which is, you know, food for birds and certainly, you know, harms the pollinators, which certainly use, use this, you know, provide our food source, contribute to our food source. Leaf litter is shelter to some bird species and small mammals. The leaf blower high-velocity not only blows leaves, but also dislodges nutrient-rich topsoil. The leaves provide a natural protective cover for tree roots as well as releasing valuable nutrients into the soil. They also protect trees and plants from desiccation damage." Next slide. So now to the most, let's say, the most troublesome or noticeable hazard. It's the high-decibel noise of leaf blowers. They are known to cause psychological damage. Research findings sign that high-decibel noise increases risks to learning and concentration in children. There, the noise, you know, contributes to habit disruption for wildlife populations. Noise pollution, prolonged exposure to noise disrupts vital communication that is necessary for the preservation of our habitats and ecosystems. And the gas leak blowers noise travels distances. It's not just, it, you know, it can travel as far as 800 meters away. And it travels through glass and building walls and certainly exceeds the 55-decibel limit considered safe by the World Health Organization. Recently, I had a weed whacker next door all day, eight to four. I checked the, the decibel level with my iPhone, which you can do, which is some, it was some distance away, but it was 78 decibels. And, you know, it was quite annoying to have that for eight hours. During, you know, it was during the, the noise, you know, the noise ordinance periods, but still, it was, it was troublesome. So also, actually, the high-decibel warning should be made, you know, made more important to the landscape, to the landowners, landscape workers, and spectators. And children and animals should be prevented from being near than 50 feet while the blowers are in use. I think that's important. Yes.
This might be a good time to comment on the concept of decibel readings. I think the example you were giving is, you measured from your iPhone and it was in the mid-'70s or?
It was 78.
78.
I'm sure that the, the worker that was using the machine, it was maybe even over 100 because I was a distance away. He was also working without any protective, you know, wasn't wearing any personal protection. I actually then talked to his manager and said, you know, I'm, I'm upset that this has been going all day, but you should at least have your employee, you know, wear personal protection. And he said, "Oh, he doesn't want to." And I said, "Well, you're his boss, you know, you should tell him, you should do it." So there is definitely a, a education. We need to educate the landowners and the landscape workers on these known hazards.
Just to be, just to illustrate the fact that as decibels increase, it's like an, I think they call it a logarithmic increase. So going from 55 to 78 is basically 100 times greater impact on, on your hearing than, than the 55.
Yeah. Yeah. And you can see from this quote that even a small, small period of exposure can cause pain and injury and hearing loss. Next slide. So in reference to what I was just discussing, "The awareness of the social justice issues that relate to the hazardous working conditions needs to be addressed. Owners and supervisors of land care companies should be made aware of the serious health risks of exposure to high levels of noise. They are, this population is most at risk for hearing loss, pulmonary and heart diseases, cancer, onsite accidents. And the workers should be provided with the proper personal protection equipment." Next slide. "I think it's no secret that the greatest regulation resistance is from landscape maintenance businesses. The common landscaper comments and complaints are listed below here. And these complaints are, of course, are passed along to their customers, and thus, a cycle of resistance here is perpetuated. These, these particular comments are from the Quiet Yards Greenwich White Paper because they interviewed, you know, they, they conducted a very extensive survey of their residents and they talked to many companies about the effect of any kind of restriction on, 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 like, on gas-powered lawn equipment. And, you know, essentially, this is distilled into these particular complaints, that battery time on electric blowers is not sufficient. It would take longer to complete their work. Electric, electric blowers are not as powerful as gas. The upfront cost of buying electric equipment is prohibitive. Would, and they would have to pass the cost on of new equipment to customers. And then finally, they comment that leaf blowers, and this is, you know, this is a legitimate argument, that leaf blowers are not as environmentally friendly as promoted due to the issues related to lithium-ion battery disposal. To address some of these complaints, the Conservation Commission invited an all-electric land care owner to present, and he did a very good job of addressing the complaints and talked about how he transitioned from gas to electric. And I think that, you know, the, that this committee should also, at some point, invite some of these companies that are all-electric to present, to address some of the complaints that the, the landscape maintenance business are currently expressing. Slide 10. So we also discussed, you know, tactics that might help address the landscaper concerns of a phased plan of two to five years for transitioning from gas-powered to electric land care equipment could be developed. You know, the state of California, as Hillary mentioned, does have a long-term phased plan that's taking them from gas-powered to, that's eliminating all gas-powered lawn care, land care equipment. We could consider establishing retail incentives and financial and loan programs to help with the transition. The state of California did that. We need to provide an analysis and how a return on investment can be achieved. The Quiet Yards Greenwich White Paper did, you know, explore that and did provide some information on that. There needs to be some kind of provision to educate landscapers on sustainable land care practices and provide guidance on how to leverage eco-friendly services to the health, to health and environmentally concerned customers. There are organizations that specialize in training and certifications for land care businesses that our town could invite to, to present or, you know, offer this kind of training. And then lastly, to, you know, I think we need, we might need to investigate the current local recycling practices for the batteries to ensure that EPA guidelines are followed. Next slide. Also, as Hillary mentioned, there is a wave of, of, you know, these, these kinds of restrictions crossing the United States. Every day I get a notice through my email that another community is considering some kind of restriction. These are just, now they, this, from this presentation, this is just a sampling, and every day there are more, more communities considering this. They're either, they either have passed legislation or they're in the process.
Yeah, Linda, you can actually add Bronxville to that list as well. My brother lives there, and he was just telling me how they're trying to do the same thing. So you could add them to that list.
Right.
It's on there.
Oh, is it, is it? I'm sorry, Bronxville. Oh, there it is. You're right. I'm sorry. You're much more thorough than I expected. I apologize.
I wouldn't be surprised because, you know, that I missed something. The, yes. So, next slide. So this is what you've all been waiting for. Slide 12. "These are the suggested restrictions that the commission considered. I will have to say, I think that they're light. I mean, they're certainly far from being a complete ban. I know that the, that in the, in the future of this journey of 1,000 miles, as Tom referred to it, there will be a lot of discussion on what's appropriate and what is reasonable and practical, practical for the New Canaan community. But this is why, for our seasonal restrictions, we propose to allow GLBs from October through December 15th. And then from mid-March through April. We also recommended acreage limitations to limit the number of GLBs per property. One for properties under three acres and two for properties over three acres. And then we also thought that the, limiting the number of hours per land care visit might be something to consider. Weekend and holiday limits restrict usage of all leaf blowers, electric and gas on Sundays and federal holidays. And limit the hours of use Monday through Saturday, 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. That's a little, those are a little more, you know, less than what the noise ordinance has, you know, specified. And then allow only one leaf blower per property on Saturdays. The emergency use allowance, allow GLBs after natural emergencies such as hurricanes. And not to place an undue burden on our DPW, our Department of Public Works. We would allow them to continue GLB use on public property, but perhaps advocate for a transitional plan to electric-powered machines. I'm sure my partner here, Tiger, will talk about that. And then the last, lastly, there would be no restrictions for electric leaf blowers. Some communities also have this, that consider allowing electric leaf blowers year-round that operate within the time and property guidelines that are specified above. Next slide. So, you know, to help to provide proactive solutions to objections or to any kind of resistance, the Conservation Commission believes that we need to raise the Canyons' awareness of the known, known hazards of GLBs. And these are certain solutions that were, that were, you know, suggesting to create an awareness campaign that encompasses, encompasses not only the noise nuisance of gas-powered leaf blowers, but also their toxic environmental impact. Consider conducting a survey of New Canaan residents. That could be a twofold benefit in that, you know, conducting a survey raises awareness, but it also will help us identify what is palatable to our community. "Position New Canaan as a quiet community that values its parks and open space. Sponsor community presentations and training." Mentioned that before with the, in regard to the landscape workers and landscape owners, landscape care owners. "Provide sustainable land care guidance. Encourage landowners to design more sustainable landscapes that require less water, fertilizer, and pesticide use." Advocate for less grass and planting more eco-friendly plants. I think, you know, some of these, some of these initiatives have already planned and New Canaan has taken up that particular that particular issue. And I think, you know, that there's also a lot of press on how, on, on this as well. So Hillary mentioned this to reexamine New Canaan's noise ordinance and enforcement. Encourage hearing and breathing protection. It's very important, I think, that landscapers, children, seniors, and people with chronic illness be warned to keep a safe distance from GLBs. And develop a long-range plan as a possibility, you know, to create a long-range plan to reduce dependency on all gas-powered lawn care equipment. There is, the movement is, is, is here, you know, it's all a matter of time. It's like, you know, electric vehicles, electric vehicles are now just beginning, I feel, to have, you know, are taking an importance in, in our, our community, our own community and the larger community. And then, and this, anyway, let's go on. Slide 14. So a summary of the hazards. We know the GLBs have dirty engines. The noise is harmful, travels long distances, penetrates walls and windows. The air jets disperse harmful particulates. The leaf removal removes leaves that contribute to habitat destruction, destruction and biodiversity. Hazardous work conditions. Land care workers are exposed to extremely high levels of noise and air pollution. And among, and in addition to the land care workers, children and seniors are the most vulnerable population to these known hazards. Slide 15. So these known hazards, you know, there should be a call to action. That the dangers posed by GLBs require immediate intervention. The pollution and noise discharged by these machines are hazardous to the health of workers, the public, and the environment. Policymakers need to take immediate action to stop their use for landscaping and maintenance and take steps to transition the industry to cleaner, quieter, healthier equipment and practices throughout appropriate, through appropriate policies and regulations. I didn't write that. The Quiet Communities Board did. But I think it pretty well summarizes what was just presented. And the next slide, the last slide, Tiger. This is just, was to add a little humor to our presentation. So I hope that, I hope you laugh a little. Thank you. Any questions?
Please, anybody on the, either on the committee or the town council, if you have any thoughts or questions? Of Linda? Linda, one of the things that, that we've seen in Greenwich, I mean, this white paper they put out is almost 80 pages long, Quiet Yards, New Canaan, Quiet Yards Greenwich. And it makes clear that they, that group has interacted with pretty much every constituency in Greenwich. I mean, the, from, from, from town employees and to the Board of Selectmen to interviewing almost 20 different landscapers to taking a survey of a 680 town residents. And so the I, I take it they've been at this for a while. They certainly have created a significant open dialogue and, and gotten input from a variety of constituencies. How would we match that in New Canaan? If we wanted to craft a New Canaan-specific solution? I guess we would need a survey. We would want.
I, you know, I think that a survey would be very helpful. As I said in my presentation, it not only raises awareness, but it enables the public to to participate in whatever decision that the town makes on their behalf. Their, their present, they're in their survey, and I, I thought I had this statistic out here. I don't, but it was interesting that the, the results when they asked if people, if their respondents wanted leaf blower restrictions, darn, I can't find it. But the dominant number was definitely that they wanted a restriction of some kind. So, you know, I thought that was very informative, but I do think, I mean, we could certainly use their their format, their survey, conduct our own so that we can actually compare New Canaan to, at least some of the questions, compare New Canaan to Greenwich. But I don't think that our community would have a much different response than Greenwich, but I could be wrong. But a lot of that white paper is on their, you know, regarding their survey results as well as their interviews with land care companies, both gas and electric. Which, you know, we could do too.
Yeah. How much of that fact-finding have, has your organization done, done and or, and/or could be done by other organizations in town?
Well, we just started with the recommendation that the community, that the town should look at some kind of restriction. We haven't, you know, looked at any kind of survey yet. The committee that was formed last September did discuss doing a survey. But we wanted to, you know, we wanted to actually generate interest to see if there was a possibility that the town would adopt some kind of a policy or ordinance before we pursued any other actions.
Steve?
I just wanted to be clear on the number of respondents in Greenwich. Did you say it was 639 or?
680, I think.
680, okay. I'm trying to, I was trying to, I'm trying to weigh that against. So there's 7,200 households in New Canaan and probably double that in Greenwich. So 680 is a relative.
What I didn't see, what I didn't see, oh, here it is. What I, what I didn't see in this, and maybe I overlooked it, was the response rate, you know, of the number of surveys that they sent out. The, the response rate is the number of respondents to respond. And that would be an important important fact to, to ask them. Because you people that asked, you know, there is an inherent bias. The people that answer surveys like this typically typically have a strong feeling one way or another before they answer the survey. So we would have to be sure that we guarded against that.
Well, also, some of their questions have persuasion on the front end. So they give you
Yes.
two or three sentences of
Okay.
Why, why this will save your life? And then they say, do you want to save your life?
Exactly. So I, my career was spent in advertising research. It was trying to prove the effectiveness of advertising. And there's definitely a skill to asking the questions to get the answer you want. Which you've definitely noticed.
Right. Part of what you mentioned here is education. So that may not be something that, that the town council does. That, that would be something that you might want to embrace, your group or other environmental groups?
Well, I think that the environmental groups, I mean, I, I, the Conservation Commission would be interested, I think. I'm speaking for the other commissioners, but there are other environmental groups like Planet New Canaan who possibly would be interested in joining with the commission in sponsoring educational workshops, seminars, et cetera.
I'd also be curious to see if the other environmental groups noticed an issue that I've sort of noticed. I mean, the, the presentation begins with a pretty frightening piece of background about how deleterious gas-powered leaf blowers are to our health and the health of our children and our hearing and the and the climate and everything else. And that, yet when you get to the, to the recommendations, it doesn't reflect that kind of comprehensive
Well, I
panic or fear. They're more guarded and
Yes.
limited. I was curious how you thought that through.
Well, I think that, you know, if I were to personally write this, you know, recommend, make a recommendation, I would probably say I would want it all banned. But we have, I, I know that that's a personal opinion. And I know that there are a lot of other opinions and I don't, I think that when the, when the commission voted this recommendation, you know, I approved the recommendation. We wanted something that we felt was actionable, that wouldn't raise the ire of, of New Canaan residents too much. So it's conservative. I agree. It's very conservative. But I think, I, I also thought that the, that your, your committee would take this up. I don't know exactly what the process should be at this point. I'm sure we'll have other discussions about this. But that, that somebody needs to sort out what the community will accept. And then I, and that's part of the reason why our recommendations are what I would, would consider light. A light restriction versus a complete ban.
I guess one of the things I was getting at is, so take Planet New Canaan, for instance, and I noticed that Robin's got her hand up, so she'll answer this question. Would you concur to the Conservation Commission's recommendations? Or would you be more aggressive or less aggressive or?
No, actually, I was gonna, sorry, I don't know if you can hear me. I was gonna say that I think we need to have compromise. So, I mean, would I like them fully banned? Yes, but, you know, people need to pick up their leaves. We looked at places like Bedford, New York, and they take into account that give people time, landscapers, to do their jobs, you know, not great for the environment, but you have to compromise. And though I am noticing, and this is just anecdotal, because what I'm seeing, you know, is landscapers, sorry, burn chat them. You know, landscapers are now using leaf blowers rather than at the end of the summer of just clean up, you know, where they've done weed whacking, but just going around constantly while the moment's going on, and these leaf blowers, like three guys, and I just don't know if that's necessary and the noise that it's creating and the pollution, and particularly what worries some though is when leaf blowing is done right after pesticide application. That's quite concerning. Especially for children, anyone, but in, in my world, would I want them banned? Sure, but I, I don't think that's feasible and I don't think it's fair. But I, I think having a seasonal restriction so people can enjoy the outside of New Canaan and not have this nuisance of coming in is, is a reasonable request.
Rita?
And I also think that, you know, I think I mentioned that this, you know, this could be a first step. You know, maybe a baby step in most, in many respects. But we can have a plan, a phase plan to move toward more aggressive restrictions.
Rita?
Yeah, no, I, I kind of just following up on what Robin had said about compromise. You know, ideally, I think I would want it to be, you know, eliminated altogether because of all the things that you mentioned. But in, in reality, can we do that? And I'm just wondering, you know, I think about the poor landscape businesses who can't flip the switch that quickly. Or can't, you know, just start raking instead. It's just, it's just not, it's just not really an option. And I'm just wondering, like, are, are there ways to incentivize those businesses? Do we have grants or is there something we could do to incentivize those businesses to, you know, change that model or their model? Would, would, would that help at all?
Well, you know, we, we could start with the education and then we do have the all-electric land care owners who would be willing to come in and hold workshops and, and help, you know, help train and talk about the benefits and talk about the problems because they
They can't afford to just buy all new, what I'm saying is they can't afford to buy all new equipment, like right off.
No, no, no.
Are there like incentives? Things, I mean, training, they're not, they don't have time. You know, like I'm just thinking, like, can we give them money to buy different equipment? Can we incentivize them? Like just being realistic, you know?
You know, the state of California has done that, you know, but, you know, that requires a lot of, you know, a lot of thought and working with banks and retailers, but, you know, we could do that. But, you know, that would be, that's like, you know, something after we kind of determine what kind of restrictions we're going to have. Then we go into the education or we go to the education and then we have restrictions. We're, we're really just starting this journey of a thousand miles. We have a lot to learn about our community and the response of our, you know, our primary landscape providers. But yeah, there are different ways. And I think there's a slide, one of my slides addressed different things that can be done that also the Quiet Yards Greenwich also proposed to help landscapers move toward this. But again, we're not, the, the commission is not recommending a ban. We're not saying you have to have today, go out, you know, to a landscaper and say, you have to go out and buy a, an electric land blower. We're just limiting, you know, providing some kind of restriction on the use.
Yeah, I guess, I, I guess I'm thinking if we wanted to do things more quickly, if we really were serious about making these changes, I mean, that's really where we could make the change. Like if we gave them educating lands, I, I just, I guess I'm just trying to be realistic, you know, like I, I think we could make this change a lot more quickly if we gave them the resources to be able to change. But again, that's just, that's just my opinion, but if we really want to be ambitious
Right.
to make this change, there are, I think there are ways we could, we could encourage it beyond just education that, that would, would make this a more rapid, I guess, transformation.
Yeah. Well, that would require working with the retailers. It would require working with banks, with loan incentives, financial incentives for, you know, transitional plan. But we could certainly explore it.
Hillary?
I mean, part of it too, I do think the education piece is important and part of it is educating our residents because I think once residents know a lot of this information beyond the noise, and we hear a lot of the noise complaints, but then when you go further and you tell people about the health and environmental issues too, it, it's, it is impactful. And sometimes the market can dictate change, right? Sometimes it's the residents themselves who might say, I'm not comfortable with people working in my yard that might be putting their health at risk. Or I'm not, you know, I'm not comfortable that I might be causing. So sometimes it, it can come down to, you know, I know a lot of my friends have switched to more natural yards. Like my yard is mostly clover now, which is great. I mean, it's so I know a lot of my friends have switched to more native plants and are trying to be more sensitive. They're, they're not doing the hardcore pesticides. They're demanding organic, more organic use of their yard. And so sometimes you can come from a consumer perspective and have, have a more educated consumer who doesn't realize what these leaf blowers are doing. They, they just like a nice yard, but they don't understand at what cost, right? So I think that, that why, one of the reasons why we're having these public hearings too is to, is to also educate our residents about this issue because sometimes it can come from demand. You can, you can change things that way too. So I think this is really enlightening in that respect. Because I think, I think even the, the all-electric landscaper that you had, you know, he's getting he, there's demand for this. I mean, he has, he has a customer base and he's getting calls all the time. I mean, he's not out there trying to get business. It's coming to him because people really want, he's, he's a full-service landscaper and he's, you know,
He, he said that his, he initially gets calls because people want organic care. Want here. Then he introduces the, the electric component to organic lawn care. But he's very busy. You know, these companies that you talk to that I've talked to are very busy. They, they don't, they're not hurting for work. I thought that for myself personally, I would walk the walk and talk, since I was talking the talk, I should walk the walk. So I bought an electric leaf blower and a trimmer and said to my, my landscaper, use this. So I bought an electric leaf blower and a trimmer and said to my, my landscaper, use this. And, um, and rake. And, um, it wasn't really, you know, he found that it really wasn't more time, that there was a little pleasure in, in raking. So, you know, I think it, you know, as you've said, starting from the consumer, the market, you know, um, making, making demands on their own land care companies, um, would be, you know, would be beneficial.
Robin? Did you have more?
No, I mean, it was interesting. There was a presentation in Westport at Wakeman Farms regarding, um, gas leaf blowers, and I believe, I don't know what happened with the, the Westport, for this, it, it went quiet. They were a lot more restrictive, um. But one of the things that was brought up by the landscapers who were there was they, they did say, we know this is coming. Like we, you know, with California, they're like, we know it's heading this way. So it seems very defensive at first and then they kind of like, that they, they know this is coming. A good place to also, um, do some research would be, um, I don't want to plug anyone, but Shubby's Hardware over the border in Town Ridge, they, they have all electric equipment now, but I would also say, just from an environmental standpoint, you know, blowers in general are not great, regardless of gas or electric. You do have wit, you know, going about 200 miles an hour into the ground, disturbing the soil, disturbing, uh, micro, uh, causes, micronisms in, in the soil. So, um, I think there also needs to be education on just, when it's appropriate to use any sort of leaf blower and, and other ways to not leaf blow in general.
I agree, I agree. I, I did, there was a little parentheses in the presentation that, while, you know, we, we, we did make a recommendation that, that electric could be used, um, all year. But to, to be aware that it still carried the environmental har- you know, harm to the environment with the high-velocity air blowers. But again, um, I think, you know, I, I was just thinking as you were talking, one of the reasons we came up with the recommendation that we did is that we looked at other, um, communities and observed what the resistance was. And we didn't want to have to, um, initially start with something that was, uh, so restrictive that we started with, um, controversy instead of some general acceptance. There is, there are also comments that the landscapers hope wo- wouldn't be opposed to it, but they're looking forward to the technology of the, uh, electric machines to be more advanced.
On that point, I don't know if you, if anybody noticed, but a couple of years ago Elon Musk promised that Tesla would be producing electric, uh, lawn blowers. I, I don't know what happened to that. I guess he decided to get involved in other projects.
On Twitter.
Yeah, right. Oh, Steve, did you have more?
Yeah, just a couple of things. One, one of the things that we've been talking about is sort of landscape centric and I'd like to hear more about the residents because there are an untold number of people that still do their own thing in their yards and, and that to me, you know, when you're talking about trying to phase this in, I like the idea of phasing it in over a long, long period of time. I mean, I'm talking long, long haul here.
Oh, it is long.
Rita, only, only because I come from the world of electric cars and I know that in this country, we've been selling electric cars and Tesla's had made headlines all over the place, as Tom just mentioned. The, the fact is that there's only four to five percent of every car on the road today. After all the awareness and after all the, all the buildup of electric cars, there's still 96% of the cars on the road are gas powered or diesel powered. So it takes a long time to, you know, march through this kind of stuff and to, you know, it, it's difficult. So education is certainly there. Then Robin, I think is, the way Planet New Canaan has soft sold so many great things in this town. Hey, food scraps and, and, you know, all the things that they've done to raise awareness about that stuff is huge, but it, it, there's a difference between raising awareness and then telling people what they have to do. And one of the things I noticed was no leaf blowers on Sundays and a lot of people, Sunday is the day that they do their yard work and, and that's been this way for decades. And I don't know how you tell residents that they can't do yard work on Sunday. It just doesn't make any sense to me, but that's.
Yeah, no, I, I hear that, Steve, and I think particularly, you know, for people who work, who do their own yard work, who might do it on Saturday, but the weather's bad, then they have to do it on Sunday or they wait another week and hope that the weather's good. My dad does his own lawn, lawn care too. We live, he lives on a seven acre farm at, in Virginia and he still does his own yard. So he will, our next door neighbor is a landscaper. He will not let him touch his yard. So I, I have complete, complete empathy for people who do their own yard work. My dad leaves vacation to go cut his lawn and then comes back. So like, I, I, I live that life. I, I know it. So we're, I'm very, very, um, aware of that and I, I'm very sympathetic to that. I think we have to keep that top of mind totally.
Betty, we're gonna do public comments after we hear from Tucker, uh, from Tiger, uh, but Kimberly, did you have something to add? You're muted.
Um, no, I was just concerned because I looked at the agenda and it seemed like everything was supposed to take place in 30 minutes. I didn't want public comment to be overlooked. So I do want to comment when that, um, session begins. Thank you.
Yeah, we won't, we won't forget. We knew, we, we need input from the public as much as anything else. Kimberly, we, you were muted, I think.
Okay, sorry. Um, first of all, I wanted to thank Linda for her presentation. I've heard it once before. Hearing it again, to me, just, um, raises my own awareness and I hope it does to other people about, you know, that this is a really important health issue. I mean, I kind of see a two-pronged possible approach, because, um, you know, we've talked about the landscapers. We've talked about people who do their own lawn care. And what I'd like to kind of bring to light, because I've heard from a lot of people who are at home working, on Zoom and just spending a lot more time in their homes, trying to do their jobs. That is, um, really difficult for them to do their work, because as Linda said, the noise penetrates windows and walls and doors and all that kind of stuff. So, um, given that, you know, from a very common sense point of view, leaves fall once a year. So I, I think there's two ways to approach this. One is to deal with the noise issue with the seasonal ban. So there's, I think Linda proposed a seasonal ban, um, that leaf blowing would only be allowed when there's leaves. So that would be in the fall and then a spring cleanup. And then a second-pronged approach to kind of phase in switching over from gas-powered leaf blowers to electric. But my understanding, and Linda, correct me if I'm wrong, that, that electric blowers have a, are not quiet either. So.
No, they still have a decibel le- level, but, uh, it's not nearly as strong as a gas-powered. Although, you know, there are different, uh, gas, gas-powered leaf blowers that have different decibel levers, levels. The newer ones are trying to, um, you know, to lower the decibel levels. Um, and then there are mufflers. There are some communities that require mufflers on their leaf blowers. Uh, so there are different kind of tactics that, uh, could be, uh, implemented such as that. But yes, they do. But I, you know, I, I did, I did buy one, you know, I wanted to hear myself. And it was much, much less, much quieter than, it was like running a vacuum cleaner. A very powerful vacuum cleaner, but still, yeah.
So, so I guess my, my thought is, is to, you know, deal with people who are having a very hard time functioning because of all this extra noise. So the leaf blowers, I think many years ago started off just blowing leaves and now it's a year-round thing. Um, it includes flat grass clippings and other, you know, making lawns perfect and things like that. But I think we have to have a balance. I mean, someone said compromise, but a balance between the needs of people who are at home, whether they're working or not, or just trying to enjoy their property. Um, the landscapers and what their, you know, their demands are, and then also the people that, that do their own lawn. But to me, putting in a seasonal ban, um, regardless of whether it's gas-powered or leaf-powered, uh, like, uh, gas-powered or electric-powered, um, would be one, one step in kind of alleviating, um, this noise problem and then phase in a switch over, you know, over, like Steve said, a lengthy period of time. Thank you.
Uh, Robin, did you have more?
No, sorry.
Rita?
Bye, I'll do that.
Rita?
Uh, yeah, hi, sorry about that. Um, I just actually just want to make a comment because, uh, while I was talking about landscapers, I do think there is an education piece that would be interesting for folks that are doing their own lawns that are not as, I think there's a difference between smaller lawns and like these like, Hillary, you're probably like seven acre or whatever lawns where it's really hard to employ some of the more, um, or the less noisy, uh, methods. But we actually, it's funny. So our, when we had leaves, um, and we are, we had fired our line landscaper and we had to do it ourselves. We, uh, learned from someone, uh, and how to, and how to kind of rake and make things efficient. And we raked everything up onto like a long tarp, tarp and then moved the tarp, you know, to the, the street and kind of dropped them off. Like you don't ness- you don't, it, it didn't take any, any longer than leaf blowing to do that. And I do think there is some sort of an education piece where you can let, give people at least an alternative to leaf blowers that is, it doesn't take all that much more time. It's a little bit more labor. Um, but it was kind of like, you know, my son and my husband and I were doing it. It was like a family thing. I don't know. I don't know if there's like a, um, just sort of an education piece to, and just encourage folks to, to, to even consider an alternative.
Certainly land care practices.
Yeah, like I don't think, it was funny because, um, we had someone come over and saw us, what, what we were doing and they were like, how did you know how to do that? That's really cool. Like, we wanted to, we didn't know. They didn't like, they were like, oh, you put it on a tarp and you drag it. And we were like, yeah, that's what people used to do. It's, it, it wasn't, you know, for us, it was not a big deal, but for them, it was kind of like, that was crazy. Like what a cool idea. And I just think there might be a little bit of that, um, and we don't have like, you know, we, we have like a half an acre. So for us, it was not a big deal. And we're also in a neighborhood where if we were doing leaf blowing, everybody would hear it because we're, we're a lot more, it's more condensed area. So it, it mattered almost more because if you have a condensed area and you have 40 households all using leaf blowers, it's, it's a real, it's a big issue. Um, so I mean, I think, I think there is, even though I was talking about landscapers and incentivizing, I do think that's important. But I also think there might be an education piece that people might find helpful.
Actually Rita, I heard several complaints about the grating sound of your rake. Let's get Tiger.
Yeah, you want to get Tiger to?
Yeah, let's get Tiger. Yeah.
Sorry to put you on the spot, Tiger, but.
That's all right.
You know, I was hoping, so I, I, I think I told you, I was hoping that, um, you could tell us sort of about the scope of, uh, gas-powered leaf blower usage by the town, where they're used the most, when they're used the most. Um, that sort of thing, whatever you can, whatever information you can tell us.
Sure, I didn't put together any formal presentation, um.
No worries.
But thank you for the opportunity to, to, uh, tell you where we are. So I can tell you that, uh, in DPW, there's six divisions plus, uh, then the recreation department that all use, um, leaf blowers, uh, either gas-powered or electric. So you have the highway department, the parks department, uh, the transfer station, the wastewater treatment facility, our town buildings, our tree service, even though it's contracted out, they, uh, they use leaf blowers and then the recreation department. And it's year-round. It's not a, um, it's not a one-month, uh, operation or two-month or a, uh, uh, seasonal operation, so to speak. So if you, the, um, the thought being that, um, we are trying to transition, I'll say that first, and some of our smaller divisions, like the town buildings, transfer station, wastewater, um, and even recreation, um, they're already starting to transition over because it's easier, right? At the transfer station, I can put a blower in and I can charge it because they're at the station house all day. When you get into the larger departments or ones where we have varied, um, properties or we've got to travel long distances, that gets a lot harder. So highway parks and recreation make much more difficult. Um, to give you an idea of, uh, the highway department, we use them year-round. We start our sweeping in March, April, when, uh, when the weather provides, uh, at that point in time. And it runs all the way to October, November, and we're sweeping the town. Uh, we're sweeping the downtown twice a week and then we're sweeping every, uh, road. We have to do at least the road, every road at least once, um, a year and we try to do twice a year. And that's actually a permit that we have with the DEP, um, that we actually have to, um, adhere to. Uh, so we utilize the, the blowers, especially in the downtown area, to try to blow everything out from all the, all the, uh, businesses out into the street and then the sweeper comes by and takes it. And then specifically for our leaf pickup, we're talking, uh, November and December, all hands on deck. Every single person is out doing leaves, six days a week, 10 hours a day. Um, to try to finish what we've got to do because we have a limited timeframe in order to do it. Um, if we don't get it done and the snow falls, that, those leaves stay there in a windrow or wind up being blown up on somebody's property. And we're having to clean them up either frozen or in March and April. Uh, so that's problematic. Plus, we have to change over our equipment because our leaf equipment, also our snow equipment. Um, you know, so some of our trucks are doing double duty, right? They've got leaf boxes on it. We take the leaf boxes off and then they transition to, uh, transporting salt, um, for the winter. So the, uh, so for the highway department specifically for that makes it quite difficult, um, or that's what we're doing as far as it goes. The, uh, the recreation department is using it, you know, blowing off the bleachers. They use it at Meat Park. I actually saw some people today blowing, uh, off the pickleball courts, paddleball courts, um, and they're, uh, buying a, an electric leaf blower for the pool deck. Again, recreation might be one where we can transition over and we are looking at that, um, whereby we could transition to something different. Specifically the pool deck, we could have a, an electric blower there and then charge it without any problem. Um, as far as the parks department goes, utilize leaf blowers every day, every day throughout the year. Um, so you've got your typical grass cutting throughout the year, um, in the, in the cutting months where they, they cut and then blow just like a, just like a normal landscaper. But then we have our leaf pickup in the fall and then in the spring, because we've got time in the fall where we've got to get the leaves up. And in the spring, we try to then make every property pop before sports start, because once the sports start and the field sports start, soccer, baseball, um, lacrosse, what have you. And that runs all the way through from April through November. Um, you know, football and lacrosse, what have you in the fall and soccer in the fall. So we're utilizing all the way through the, uh, we have 13 blowers, uh, backpack blowers for the parks department. We have five large, um, walk behind blowers. Those are used for our larger properties and they're also used on our turf fields. One, to stand the turf back up again for the G max factor and two, to blow out any debris that happens to be on there. Again, for the G max factor to keep the turf longer, right? So once our G max factor goes down, then we actually have to replace the carpet or we've got to do some more extensive work.
Tiger, you said that, sorry to interrupt you. You said that's just for parks, the 13 backpacks, flowers and the five walk behind. Okay.
Yeah, and then we have, and then we have some other, uh, we have some other toe behind units, um, or, uh, units that are attached to our Kubota that we actually utilize to blow off the trails at Waveney before all the cross-country events and, uh, the Waveney Trail Series, uh, the running events, the cross-country events during summer. So those are utilized as well. And the highway department does the exact same thing on our roads specifically before we pave any road. They're all blown off and cleaned. Some of our operations as far as, um, paving require us to actually sweep up during, you know, uh, or directly after. If we have, we put a chip seal down, we've got to sweep it and then we put a micro thin overlay on the top of it. It's called the cape seal, right? So we've got to do that, um, as well. And we have toe behind units and units that attach to the front of our, our, um, vehicles that actually blow off the streets as well. So again, the, the, uh, the thought is that it's a year-round encompassing event, but we, we are looking and we have been looking and we do have some. It's just that we can't get to the point now where we can utilize all, right? They gave it, you know, an analysis, a very quick analysis was done and for the 13 blowers that we have for the parks department, we need 104 batteries and 50 chargers. And the guys would have to come in at lunch, dump the truck, dump the batteries that they have, pick up the batteries around the chargers, change everything over and go back out after lunch and go again. Um, we don't have some of the problems that landscapers have as far as, you know, the efficiencies that someone had talked about as far as, um, filling up their gas-powered units. They got to go to the, you know, they got to go to mobile in the morning and it, 10 guys are at mobile station filling everything up. We don't have that since we have our own fueling depot, right? And then someone comes and fills up our fueling depot and our guys can fill up every afternoon. At the end of the day, they fill up at the end of the day. So we don't, we, those efficiencies aren't lost on us, right? Those are actually gained on us for us. Uh, so transitioning over to something. Those are actually gained on us for us, uh, so transitioning over to something that's battery powered actually would be a little detrimental to us. The um, you know, I, I, I can tell you that we are, we are looking and we are cognizant and you made a mention of the fact that we know the technology, you know, it's, we know it's coming. You know, and we've done every effort to change with the times as it comes and we are looking and as the technology changes, we will change. We have electric powered uh, chainsaws and we utilize those for small cuts where times when a guy's got to run out because one limb fell and they've got to get it off a trail or they got to get it off a road. But then when the wind blows and we're out there for days, that's when we go to the more heavily powered gas operated ones because we've got to use them and you know, the cut ratio is a lot greater than say twenty cuts of a four by four for one battery. That just wouldn't work for us at, at present. Um, you know, and then when we're out, we have a problem with just, how do we charge, right? At present, how would we charge when we're out in the field? The other landscapers, if they can charge at a residence property, it's great, that's why I mentioned, you know, some of our stagnant or static divisions, we can look towards, but our more mobile divisions would be a little bit more difficult. As far as the noise goes, um, we were appreciative of when the council put in the noise ordinance that they gave us an exemption um, for municipal operations and I can tell you that I get very few complaints on a noise operation or a noise complaint per year, I probably get three, two to three, I'm trying in my head to think and I know I get two a year at minimum, on the first time we come into the downtown to try to clean it up in March and April and then somewhere in July when we're trying to do it for the sidewalk sale because that's an extensive cleanup. And then somewhere in the, in the July timeframe when we're, when we're striping all of our roads and they come in at two o'clock in the morning with the, with this, with the uh, the striping machine, it has a very distinct noise and it wakes people up. To be honest with you, it's just one of those things that, that grates on someone as it's going past and if it takes too long to go past the house, someone will wake up and give us a call, but for the most part, um, you know, I, I get complaints on blowers twice a year, you know, there is a resident who lives in the downtown area that we wake up at four thirty or five o'clock in the morning and she calls me every single time that she wakes up, just so I wake up. But we're, we're, we're equal, um, and then, you know, and but there's not much I can do for her at that point in time, it's twice a year and, and we apologize. Um, but for noise overall, we, you know, we try very hard, the parks department itself, um, they have to work at all the schools, you know, so they go early or they vary their times to then make sure that we're not affecting the schools, you know, so they'll be there either right before the school opens, right after the school closes, at certain times when they know they can, you know, get into the, into the property and not have a problem or they won't utilize the equipment at that time because they know that they don't want to disturb, because we disturb the student and we're going to get a phone call, so we avoid the phone call by, by avoiding that type of work. But we are cognizant of it and um, I have to say that overall for every property that we touch, I don't get any complaints, you know, on a noise standard. Um, so we, you know, again, we appreciated that. I did appreciate that Quiet Yards Greenwich put in a, an exemption, a municipal exemption for Greenwich, I appreciated the Conservation Commission did the same. Um, our counterparts in Westport, uh, the park and rec director there and the director of public works there are both very unhappy with how Westport is traveling at present because they're not uh, giving a municipal exemption or even considering a municipal exemption. And um, you know, their, their feeling is that, you know, the ordinance doesn't work for them as it's written in Westport and it doesn't take into account their operations and it doesn't take into account what they need to do to satisfy or service the uh, the, the residents of Westport, so you know, in closing, I can say that we know that the technology eventually will be coming, we've, we've been studying these for quite a long time. We have certain pieces of equipment that we had been looking at for ten years that now are good for us and we can utilize, John just bought a vent track machine. We have been looking at vent track machines for ten years because they can blow snow, plow snow, butt grass, do a whole bunch of other things, but at the time that we were looking at it, it didn't have enough power. And we said, we looked at it, we looked at it for ten years and finally he said, I'm going to buy it now because the technology came up and he can buy it, now it's a much more suitable piece of equipment for, for, and we're looking at the exact same thing as far as the electrical, you know, electric operated ones, you know, and the battery operated um, units. Anything that we can change over, we will, like I said, he's, he's buying a, he's buying an electric leaf blower soon for the pool deck. For the person who's taking care of the pool, so the, the, you know, the Benko pool will be taken care of with an electric leaf blower. And then I just saw when at Meat Park, the pickleball courts today, um, being utilized. And we'll try to do the exact same thing there, where we can, we will, it's just a question of uh, when. Um, and how, how we can change over, but I, you know, I appreciate Steve comments about it's coming, but give us a little bit of time to get there. So I don't know if you have any questions, but that kind of gives you an idea of um, where we are.
I, uh, speaking for the commission, I think, you know, when we put together our recommendations, we're just grateful for everything that you do, you know, I can't imagine anybody complaining about the work that you do to keep our community uh, clean in our parks, et cetera, which we value so much. We just, uh, and I'm grateful that you're just aware of uh, and, and doing as much as you can to um, to transition.
Well, thank you, Linda.
Yeah, I'm really impressed to hear that you've already started transitioning where you can. Um, and it sounds like you're on top of it, which I think is, is great. Um, so, and thank you for being so thorough and for coming to yet another meeting.
No problem.
Thank you. Tom, do you have any questions?
No, should we, uh, well, I, I do, but I I'm going to hold them for future. Uh, not, not as urgent an issue as, as finding the, uh, an overall strategy, that's what I'm lacking here so far, but what about public comment? Betty, do you want to be the first?
Heck, why not?
And if anybody else has, sorry Betty, that just, if anybody else from the public has any comments, please raise your hand and we'll call on you in the order in which you raise your hand, but Betty, go ahead, thanks.
Yeah, hi, good evening, Betty Lavasta, Golden Oak Road. Um, thank you for the presentation. Uh, I do have some comments and I'd like to run through the comments first. Um, when the presentation was given, it was mentioned that a group of citizens helped to draft the sixteen page uh, presentation, I would like to know or in that presentation or the draft, I'd like to see the names of those citizens listed somewhere. Because it comes across to me that it may have been the Conservation Commission, so it would be of interest to the public to know who drafted this and have it in writing.
The uh, the um, this committee was an informal committee, it was, they didn't help draft the uh, the presentation, Conservation Commission did the presentation. The committee was just basically um, a discussion committee um, to help, to help us get started on what might be reasonable. Um, uh, but they're, they definitely uh, were local citizens, local.
My, my question is, i- if I may finish my comments, could you please identify and list the names of who was on that committee? That would be of interest moving forward. And I'm sure, I'm sure the media would, would like to hear that also. Um, the second one is, I was, I will flip flop through the uh, presentation and I also went into the chat room and I went into the participants and throughout most of the uh, meeting today, we had nineteen, uh, I'm sorry, fifteen people on the call. Uh, two thirds are committee members, town council or somebody in government. And I would say about five people that by name I would think are private citizens. So I don't think the public has been reached so far and I realize this is your first presentation. I looked tonight, I, I go to many meetings throughout the month and I happened to find this on the calendar, there also is a T D A C meeting tonight and I had a third meeting to attend all at the same time. I did notice if I sit at home and I turn on channel seventy nine, T D A C meeting has priority over this and I realize this is a subcommittee. What, what I find interesting is you want to get the word out, but I don't see New Canaanite here. I don't see New Canaan advertiser here, I don't see seventy nine here. So the critical thing is to get the word out so that people can see your presentation, so that people's input, residents, private residents input can be um, shared with everybody here. Also landscapers who may not want to convert to electric. I don't see commercial businesses here on the call. So that's my, my third observation that I, I don't see many people here. Uh, speaking as a private resident, I have two acres of land. I also have a three hundred and fifty foot driveway. Um, my husband has one of those backpack gas leaf blowers or whatever you call it. He could do the whole driveway in ten minutes. Now I know you don't want gas and noise, ten minutes, start to end. If you want me to rake it, I can't rake grass clippings on a driveway. If I have to, I have to get a broom, for me to broom and sweep three hundred and fifty feet will take me at least an hour. And I will not do it as well as my husband's gas pack that will disturb me for ten minutes. Um, regarding the survey or however you want to get the public's interest in this, I would propose doing it by postcards. I've seen surveys where the survey is mounted on the town's website with very little impact, with very little response. So I don't know what you would consider to be a good response, five percent, ten percent? What questions you would ask on that survey? And how that survey is presented may in, influence the results that you get. So I mean, that's, that's my comment and I have to say thank you very much and to Tiger, I love the noise that your guys make. I also have city carting four thirty in the morning with their trucks that wake me up and that's okay. My next door neighbor's private garbage pickup comes at four thirty in the morning. And that's fine, we don't have an ordinance for that and that doesn't bother me. I could roll over and go to bed or I could start answering emails, so, thank you very much, everybody.
Thank you, Betty. Does anybody else have a comment?
Okay. I have to say that I was impressed with Betty's comments and everyone else's too, but uh, this notion that we, we really have to get the, the pulse of the town, both arguments in front of us. Uh, lots of data and uh, so far we we have some very interesting analysis from Greenwich. Uh, but it's uh, it's not New Canaan and I, I, I really hungry for getting more input.
Yes.
So I have to figure out a way to do that.
Yeah. We have received a lot of letters and I do want to acknowledge that. And they've been, we've read them all, I'm sure everybody on the committee has read them all and everybody on town council. We do read them and they've been all over the map, so it's been really interesting and there have been some good ideas that have been shared. Um, so I love hearing from everybody, I hope to hear more ideas too. Rita, did you want to say something?
Yeah, I just want to, you know, represent a couple of people that did um, reach out to me, um, just to offer that, you know, somewhat of Betty, kind of a different perspective. Which was that um, they did their own, you know, they did their own landscaping or they, they did their own work and to keep in mind that, you know, they, they, they work full time and so when you consider restrictions in terms of time, a lot of times, the only time they can do the work is on the weekends and after six. So just to, you know, to keep that in mind, um, for the kind of the normal everyday folks that maybe either don't want to pay for or can't afford a landscaper, uh, landscaper. You know, those time restrictions may be um, more uh, onerous for those folks.
The, the noise ordinance though, New Canaan is seven o'clock weekdays and six P M Fridays and then, and then the weekend, so, so that does kick in.
Yeah, I'm, I, I'm just passing, honestly, I'm just, I'm just communicating what I've, what I've been told, just to, just to make sure that folks are heard.
Deanna.
Hi, um, I just, one other thing to think about for those who um, don't do their own law, lawns but um, pay others. Um, switching over to, you know, other, either raking or electric powered blowers is going to kind of create an, um, not the, well, even raking, because it'll be more time, it's going to create a tax on residents because you're going to be paying landscapers more money. Um, and for those of us living in the four acre zone, it's a lot, you know, our landscapers are here a long, a long time every week, so every, every hour more and, you know, and when I'm hearing that the battery blowers are still noisy, you're going to have longer use of a battery blower in in areas, so you know, you, you kind of need to weigh a shorter period of time at a higher decibel with a longer period of time at a lower decibel, so just things to think about.
Well, and from the cost perspective, it's, it's not just the purchase of the equipment. If, if the landscaper's business model is based, reflects it an opinion or a conclusion that gas power is more efficient, and some people would challenge that, but if, if that's their view and that's the way they run their business, then you know, a less efficient operation is going to add cost to them and it'll be passed through to the consumer.
At a time when prices are rising on everything else.
Right. Not a simple problem. Anyway, we're going to keep at it, uh, we're going to continue to look at it and, and review what we've heard tonight and um, probably have a, a meeting of the uh, committee again to consider some other ordinances that might, that might come up, but also to just kick around ideas like, wh- where should we go from here?
Steve, did you have something that you wanted to say, that you wanted to add?
Yeah, just one thing that we didn't really talk about, but it's the enforcement of ordinances over the years that really is the issue, so you know, you could picture, let's say you put this in and, you know, picture two or three years from now, if somebody's using an old backpack blower. I, I just don't understand how we would enforce that because, you know, today, in today's world of New Canaan, you could drive, that, all of us on this group could get into a van, we could drive around, I could point out all the illegal signs that are out right now and, and you know, neon signs that are up that never would have been up ten years ago in town or you know, you, you could actually go around and sort of hand select the, but there's nobody that's actually enforcing any of this stuff and even blank conditions and stuff, it's just, it's a very, it's a very difficult thing, you'd have to have a, a whole army just to enforce this one particular ordinance, so that's that's the other side of it that's a little difficult, so, just something to think about.
I didn't raise enfor- enforcement's a, a really major question that, th- there's no point doing something if it's not going to effectuate change, so uh, I didn't comment because it wasn't part of the Conservation Committee presentation, but we are aware that in other, other communities, um, they have actually just decided at the instigation of the police or in sympathy with the police that they would try to figure out a way to get the police out of the loop, this isn't exactly what they're trained to do. And they certainly don't, don't appreciate the challenge of having to do it.
The commission, uh, the commission, when we first started this, did, you know, did think about enforcement and how difficult it would be. And I requested um, a um, some, a report on all the uh, complaints or penalties that have been uh, proposed to the police by, for the noise ordinance. And I never got anything, so, either there, I don't know, maybe you know, Tom, that there were, that there have been complaints and some enforcement. But we, but I was amused at the Greenwich Yards comment on that and that it would really, they wanted to sort of protect the, the police from having this undue burden. Um, but that it would, they would rely on residents to take videos and um, record decibel levels, which I thought that's going to create some community issues. Setting one resident against another, so um, anyway, that is a problem, definitely.
Some communities have, uh, I think many have, have decided to require that landscapers license their business and um, it gives you some leverage. Um, if you have an otherwise comprehensive scheme that makes sense that uh, you, you don't have to uh, do You you don't have to um do constant policing that hopefully the, the landscapers have, are jealous enough to try to protect their license that uh. They would, to a certain extent, cooperate with your overall scheme. But anyway, lots to think about.
I need to add the, my loud children to the noise ordinance.
I went and bought a decibel meter.
Oh, did you say there's a decibel meter on the iPhone? I should.
Yeah, just hold up your, just hold up your iPhone.
Zoom makes like so convenient, but then again, you know.
But what can you do? Who's the enforcer? All right, well, thank you, everybody.
Thank you all so much. I think we um, we can adjourn. Thank you, Tiger, and thank you, Linda, so much for participating.
Hey, guys, I just want to shout out the first ordinance committee meeting without me as chair. You guys did an amazing job. It's been, been a long time. I'm so happy. I've got great replacements here. So well done. Well, well done.
Only with you over our shoulder.
No, no, I, you know, I I came as a spectator. This is, this was great. Well done.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone.
Tiger, I don't want to hit the wrong button.
I got it, Tom.
All right.